And now I will introduce our first keynote speaker, whom James will have a conversation with a little later on. But for now, we have Ms. Beatrice Buffon, Group Senior Executive Vice President, International Division, EDF. Here she is.
Hello, everyone. I am very pleased to have this opportunity to speak to you during the Singapore International Energy Week in this new hybrid and digital format. Climate change is a collective global challenge, and it is mainly an energy one, as energy accounts for over two-thirds of global greenhouse gas emissions. This means that the carbonizing energy is now the most urgent challenge for all of us. The future of energy is electricity. In most cases, electricity is the most efficient and competitive solution to decarbonize the economy, in particular by giving up on direct fossil energy consumption in buildings, transportation, and industry. At EDF, we have always been at the forefront of the fight against climate change. Today, EDF's electricity generation fleet is one of the lowest emitters of CO2 in the world. Ninety percent of our production is CO2-free. And because the emergency is here, we decided to go further, and we committed to achieving carbon neutrality by 2050. We defined a few months ago our raison d'etre, meaning our business purpose, and we made it legally binding by integrating it into the corporate bylaws of EDF. So I would like to share it with you. Our raison d'etre is to build a carbon-neutral energy future with electricity and innovative solutions and services to help save the planet and drive well-being and economic development. Now, I would like to give you an overview of our activities, in line, of course, with our raison d'etre, with a few examples mainly based in Asia. First, EDF dedicates significant resources to renewable energies. In China, in addition to our onshore wind and solar developments, we started to invest in offshore winds through our joint venture with China Energy Investment Corporation. Over the last six months, our subsidiary in India has been awarded three solar projects for an impressive total of 1.4 gigawatts. Following our successes in India and China, we are moving forward in wind and solar in other Asian countries like Indonesia and Vietnam. In addition, EDF leads ambitious projects in hydro power. In Laos, we are celebrating the 10th anniversary of operation of a very successful hydro power plant, Namten II, for more than 1 gigawatt. We are currently progressing with the construction of a hydro power plant in Cameroon, in Africa, and we carry out hydro power project developments in South America, Africa, and Asia, notably Myanmar with the Shafali III hydro power project. Now, regarding gas, my view that gas to power may be a transitional solution to get out of coal-fired generation in some countries. In Vietnam, for example, our combined-cycle power plant, MECO, under operation since 2005 demonstrates an impressive operational performance, and we go forward with the development of a new project, Sunmi, for more than 2 gigawatts. And of course, EDF is a world leader in nuclear power, one of the lowest-carbon technologies. I can share with you that our two new generation EPR reactors in China, commissioned last year, are meeting all generation expectations. In addition to the generation mix, smart grids and smart meters are key to optimize the global electrical system. In France, we should end the installation of 35 million smart meters by 2021, and we are installing today 5 million smart meters in India, in the state of Bihar. Last but not least, we believe that access to low-carbon energy for all is a crucial challenge to address, notably through microgrid solutions and solar home systems. As a conclusion, since 2018, EDF is a proud partner of the SUE. Proud because we could measure over the last two years the steady mobilization of more and more stakeholders to achieve a lower-carbon Asia with electricity as a major cornerstone. We are highly motivated to become a key player here in Asia for now and tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Beatrice, for sharing your ambition and your insights. EDF obviously is a very important player in this region. And I hear that you are working quite actively across the region that is growing very rapidly and a region that needs to secure its energy future while also enabling pathways to the decarbonization and transitions towards a greener future. So I would like to hear your thoughts on, you know, how do you feel? And what is your view on the approach that the energy transition should have taken place in this region, particularly for Southeast Asia, where we are all, you know, working very hard to achieve? So we'd like to hear your view on that, Beatrice.
Well, as I said earlier, the future of energy is electricity. We have to replace the fossil uses in cars, buildings, industry, by electricity to ensure proper decarbonization of the economy. So of course, there is no secret recipe to determine the perfect mix, energy mix for a country. However, what I do know for sure is that an optimized energy mix in Asia, for example, should combine affordability, availability, sustainability, in addition to the decarbonization I mentioned earlier. So first, affordability. As of today, many low-carbon solutions became really affordable, such as solar, onshore wind, offshore wind, hydro power. So there are no more excuses in terms of affordability to prefer polluting electricity generation power plant against green ones. Second, availability. I strongly believe that the decision-makers should focus on the use of the local available renewable resources, such as wind, water, sun. Let's take a good example. Myanmar has one of the most important potential for hydro power in the world, almost 50 gigawatt, of which only 3 gigawatt has been developed so far. Another example, offshore wind potential in Vietnam is estimated to be in the 100-gigawatt range. This huge potential is just starting to be explored. Third, sustainability. As energy players, we shall think in the very long term, as our decisions today engage the country for decades. Sustainability is linked to environmental concerns but also to labor, social responsibility, ethics. Generating electricity has to be sustainable. And for example, coming back to Laos in the development of the Namten II hydro power plant, we set up from the very beginning an ambitious environmental and social plan for local communities. As a result, their living standards improved, particularly in areas of health and education. Our actions for the protection of the area around the plant led to the designation of this area as the first national park of the country, and more recently to the recognition by the International Union for Conservation of Nature that included this area in its green list.
Right.
So I share what President Macron said aside of COP21. There is no planet B. Now, in addition to the development of intermittent renewable energies like solar and wind, the electricity system needs to be secured with steady generation assets as long as high-scale competitive electricity storage is not available. In some countries, hydro solutions, such as pumped storage, hydro power plants, can be an efficient complement to intermittent renewable energies. In addition, as I said before, gas may have a role to play in the energy transition. It should be developed, when it makes sense, as a transitional solution to get out of coal-fired generation and to complement or even support the development of renewable energies. I want to conclude on the generation side with the nuclear, one of the lowest-carbon technologies. Nuclear generation, operated safely, as we have been doing in France for more than 40 years, is also part of the solution to decarbonize the energy mix. It might not be accessible to all countries, but I do understand that some countries in Southeast Asia do consider it. And in addition to the generation mix, there are many other topics which can be used to move toward a lower-carbon future. Smart grids, smart meters are key in the energy transition to reduce the electrical system losses and costs. Smart grids also contribute to network stability with increasing injection of intermittent renewables. And alongside energy transition, of course, low-carbon energy for all is a crucial challenge. Let's remember that 15% of the world's population has no access to electricity today. The deployment of solar home systems and microgrid solutions should contribute to reduce this figure. In conclusion, I want to remain optimistic as all kinds of solutions can be developed to make a low-carbon energy future in the region, and EDF is keen to keep contributing to it. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Beatrice, for sharing a very comprehensive and holistic view with us at SUE. Well, thank you very much for being here with us. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Buffon, for being with us here in Singapore virtually. We look forward to seeing you again next year. Onwards to our second keynote address for this segment, and James will be here still for that session. We have Mr. Adam Saminsky, President of the King Abdullah Petroleum Studies and Research Centre. Let's hear him now.
Well, hello to everybody, and thank you very much to the Singapore International Energy Week and EDF. Let's look at the next slide, please. As Beatrice mentioned, renewables is growing very, very quickly. In fact, the Energy Information Administration estimates that renewables by 2050, even before that, could be the largest source of primary fuel consumption for the world. Even with that remarkable growth, nothing has ever really approached this level of steady appreciation in the projections. Nuclear, natural gas, and petroleum still have a role to play, possibly even coal. With population growth and economic growth, and very difficult to abate carbon dioxide in sectors like aviation, shipping, steel, cement, and petrochemicals, we need something else. So next slide, please. There's something else. Next slide, please. The something else that I feel would be a huge help to everybody is the circular carbon economy framework. The idea is to apply activities, actions, and technological development and deployment in four areas: reduce, reuse, recycle, and remove. The idea is fairly simple, actually. Carbon, reduce the carbon that comes into the environment in the first place, reuse carbon as an input for feedstocks and fuels, recycle carbon through the natural bioenergy cycle, and remove and store excess carbon. Next slide, please. What we have done at CAPSARC is to look across the circular carbon economy. Next slide, please. The circular carbon economy is an integrated, inclusive approach to keeping energy sustainable, resilient, climate-friendly, and encouraging all of the options to achieve climate goals. And those options include things like non-biomass renewables, energy efficiency, demand reduction, nuclear energy, bioenergy, and carbon capture and utilization. Hundreds of scenarios run by the IPCC suggest that the need, as we move out over time for carbon capture and sequestration and the remove technologies is going to be imperative. Next slide, please. What we did at CAPSARC was to partner with leading international organizations, and these include the IEA, Writing on Efficiency, IRENA, Writing on Renewables, and the Nuclear Energy Agency, highlighting the role that nuclear energy can play. Next slide, please. In addition, the IEA looked at carbon reuse in areas like fertilizers, ethanol, methanol, enhanced oil recovery. IRENA looked at bioenergy, and the Global CCS Institute investigated the opportunities for carbon capture and sequestration. Next slide, please. We also looked at hydrogen. Hydrogen is a very versatile fuel. Blue hydrogen, made from hydrocarbons, green hydrogen with electricity. There is a big project, for example, underway here in Saudi Arabia at NEOM to generate green hydrogen. And finally, we had the OECD look at the policies needed to invoke a circular carbon economy, and they had some really good ideas. And with that, I'm going to close, and I'll be very interested in the rest of the dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. In the past, I've worked quite closely with CAPSA. In fact, I've got many friends at CAPSA. I applaud you for the great work that CAPSA is doing in both advancing the regulatory and commercial agenda for the energy industry. But I want to kind of pick your views on, you know, what do you think are the main challenges relating to the implementation of the circular carbon economy initiatives? Obviously, it's not going to be, you know, a sufficient time to address this very big question, but have a go.
Well, I think that's actually a great question, and I think the challenge, as Beatrice indicated in many of her remarks, is to get everybody working together and to try to use all of the options that we have available to address the situation. How individual countries will respond, I think, is going to depend on their resource base and their own view of what works best within their own economic framework. Singapore, for example, participated in the recent G20 Energy Ministers' Meeting when the circular carbon economy concept was endorsed. I think that making sure that energy remains accessible and affordable will be very necessary. And final comment, I think, on what has to be done is we need good regulatory frameworks and financial frameworks to push the technology that's going to be needed to address this very critical climate challenge.
Yep. Thank you, Adam, for being here with us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Saminsky. Thank you very much. And now on to a virtual panel which James will also manage. We have Dr. Sanjaya Valalum, Chief Executive Officer, Sustainable Energy Development Authority in Malaysia; Mr. Yoshiyuki Hanasawa, Executive Vice President, Chief Regional Officer for Asia-Pacific and India-Mitsubishi Heavy Industries; and finally, Mr. Michael Liebrecht, Chairman and CEO, Liebrecht Associates. James, over to you again.
Thank you, Ravi. Hi, Michael. Hi, panelists. Michael, you are the global leading expert on clean energy, transportation, infrastructure, and technology. So you get the tough question. Question one to you. European oil and gas companies have pledged to achieve net-zero emission by 2050. They are racing to embrace renewables, adopting smart future grids, electrification, digitalization, and innovating carbon-neutral LNG cargoes globally. On the other hand, we've seen the US oil majors' counterparts doubling down on hydrocarbons but with an approach to mitigate with energy efficiency and carbon capture. Now, I'd like to quote my ex-boss, Dr. Daniel Jürgen, who said in his new book that we have, there's never been such wide disparity in energy strategies between major oil companies. Now, would you like to share your views on these very two distinctive approaches? And what are their implications to the global decarbonization agenda and the net-zero energy, net-zero carbon roadmap? So please, Michael.
Thanks very much, James. And it's a great pleasure to be here at Singapore International Energy Week. I only wish I was there in person. I'm not able to do that, unfortunately, for obvious reasons. So yes, there is a great disparity between what the US oil majors are doing versus the European counterparts, who have all announced some variant of a net-zero strategy. It'll get net-zero in their own operations, not necessarily in scope three. What I would say is, I think that behind the scenes, the strategies are not quite as different. I mean, it's a very difficult environment in the US to show great climate leadership for these US companies, given the volatility of the political environment. So I think behind the scenes, we see them all working on their own energy efficiency. We also see them getting involved, particularly, you know, under the surface in things like geothermal. There's a real resurgence of interest in that. But at the end of the day, you know, the question is going to... We're getting these very mixed signals from the market about the speed with which the demand will start to evaporate, to reduce because of transitions in transportation and so on. So what we have at the moment is, as investors, people are saying, "We don't want fossil fuels." So they're putting enormous pressure on, particularly the European oil and gas companies. As political force, certainly, we see a much stronger drive towards the net-zero and countries making these net-zero commitments. But we're not yet seeing that signal quite as strongly on the demand side. So people, as consumers, are continuing to heat their houses, to, you know, transport themselves in very similar ways. So I think it's... We're sort of waiting for those signals really to materialize. But, you know, I don't think there's any doubt that they will. And obviously, COVID has complicated things by creating this kind of short-term, very substantial drops in demand. We're seeing some changes in behavior, things like the fact that we are having this conversation online. But I think what we're what we are quite clearly going to see is that signal accelerating towards suppressing the demand. And you only have to look at the commitments in Asia. You've already seen now recently a commitment of China to go to net zero by 2060. We've seen South Korea. We've seen Japan committing to 2050. We've seen Europe 2050. We don't know what the outcome will be of the US presidential election, probably not worth speculating. But there is at least one outcome where the US most likely would also join and make a commitment to somewhere around mid-century net zero. And, you know, that would be 73% of the global economy if the US joins those others who have committed. So I think in that world, what we will see is that demand signal really starting to come through very strongly. And I think we would see pretty rapid acceleration by the US oil and gas companies to sort of get... to adopt much more similar strategies to their European counterparts. That doesn't mean they're going to stop, you know, nobody's going to stop doing oil and gas overnight. But, you know, if you went back to, not even 10 years ago, even eight years ago, in the coal industry, there were people saying, you know, "Gosh, the rise of renewables, the cost reductions, the improvements in energy efficiency, LED light bulbs, and so on, mean that coal is under threat and its market will not grow forever." And many people at, you know, at this conference, actually, would have said, you know, "That's nonsense. You don't know what you're talking about. You don't know how strong the growth pressure is in Asia, and coal is going to just be on this never-ending path to growth." And in fact, 2013 was the year of global peak coal. So these trends happen more quickly than a lot of people, I think, in their respective industries think. So it's a... I don't know what else I can say because I think we are waiting for those signals from the market to see whether the riskier strategy is to lean in and lead and try to transition to becoming clean energy companies or whether the best strategy is to sort of focus on the core business and just serve the oil and gas sector and not to be distracted by the transition. My own sense is I would be leaning into the transition.
Well, thank you, Michael. That's a very interesting view. Obviously, you know, relating to that, you know, initial kind of differences in strategy, I want to kind of turn to you, Hanazawa-san, as a technology provider in this space. This is regarding the future of gas. Now, obviously, we know transition towards clean form of fuel and LNG as a bridging field of choice, integrating with renewables is very important in many parts of countries in this region. But more importantly, this transition is not just about technology. It's also about corporate strategy and how markets position itself with the reality that carbon capture and storage at this point is not yet economic at scale. And we still project, IEA projects a significant share of global energy will be dominated by fossil fuels for some years to come. So my question to you is, from the perspective of a technology player, what are you doing? And how do you see governments in high-growth emerging economies balance the important choice of investing in towards a low-carbon future and also to rebalance costs and preserve any security, particularly in this region?
Thank you very much, James.
Thanks.
I'm very pleased to be here with you.
Thank you.
It's a very tough question for me. Let me first say, the LNG is still an important fuel for Asian countries. So MHI, we have achieved the thermal efficiency better than 64% in Japan. It's the highest record in the world. Combining with the carbon capture storage, we can achieve a big reducing of the ammonia amount of CO2. In the United States, our CCS technology supported the largest CCS project named the Petronas in Texas. This facility captures more than 90% of CO2 from a 240-megawatt power station. More important, in 2018, MHI embedded and successfully tested the gas turbine combustor that can use a fuel that is 70% LNG and 30% hydrogen. And now, we are working with Buttonhole in Sweden to deploy this at the 440-megawatt Magnum per plant in the Nazara. Our goal is 100% hydrogen firing. Existing GG power plants can be reduced to low-carbon or CO2-free power generation just by converting burners and associated equipment. We can say GTC will be continuously adapted. Beatrice is right. Gas is energy transient. But gas turbine combined will be used with green hydrogen for the carbon-free society. The point is, how to make it? One of the ideas is we will create an LNG value chain, hopefully smaller CapEx in the shorter lead time. MHI, we have a history of LNG business field. We built... We built fifty-nine LNG carriers and receiving terminal. One of business model is to use FRSU floating storage big gas unit and the power plant on the floating vessels. So all the LNG carrier can be converted to FSR used to reduce cost.
Okay, thank you.
So we need to work with government and expand partners, fuel supply, transportation, regeneration of take us. So strong supports from financial people are greatly appreciated.
Thank you very, thank you for your view. Very briefly, we're running out of time. Dr. Sanjay, pleased to meet you here virtually. Well, in 2017, solar energy played almost no part in Vietnam's energy mix. Today, it, by last year, it invested, installed up to five gigawatt of capacity. And earlier, we heard the Ministry of Electricity and Energy, MOEE, concluded, mentioned that they've concluded a one-gigawatt tender of solar projects. Do you see this trend continuing in Southeast Asia as, you know, Vietnam and Myanmar, you know, overtake? You know, other parts are more mature economies in Southeast Asia? Maybe your views on that, Dr. Sanjay, and how do we enable the continued investment in this space?
Yeah, James, good to see you. It's always a pleasure to be with you, of course, this time around with a different platform, but all the same, I'll, I'll try to address this, but I'm going to give you a perspective from where Malaysia was and how this is growing in the ASEAN region in terms of what is required in actually proper planning and the investments that we are seeing. So for Malaysia, just to give you a background of it, we started what was called Sustainable Energy as the fifth fuel initiative under the Eighth Malaysian Plan. It's a five-year plan. And on the ninth year of, the Ninth Malaysian Plan, we actually set a target, thousand and five of renewable energy of three hundred over megawatts, three hundred and fifty megawatts. By the end of that plan, we only achieved seventy megawatts. So what Malaysian government did was to actually enact an RE Act, a renewable energy act, with injecting the facilities and incentivizing and catalyzing what is necessary. And that in 2020, today, we have got about two thousand over megawatts of renewable energy grid connected. So in the last ten years, we have gone from seventy megawatts to two thousand over megawatts. And so what would be the criterias that in ASEAN that we'll be looking at? We definitely need a regulatory framework. And if it's in Vietnam or in Myanmar, that regulatory framework is essential to move the impetus towards renewable energy. The other one, I think, would be the energy planning that needs to be put into place. And just like Adam just mentioned earlier as well, each country, the criteria, the balance in which they want to balance between the requirements of resilience, the pricing that is considered affordable in terms of tariff, and also the requirements of moving towards a low-carbon usage in the energy mix. So the energy planning in most countries would look at very specific criterias depending on that countries. And ASEAN, if you look at it, the GDP in Singapore is so very much high, sixty thousand over per capita, compared to if you go down to Laos, Cambodia, that maybe you're about two thousand. So there are different levels of development that is taking place. So that criteria of energy planning is going to be very different as well. But what we will have to look at is, one, the reserves margin that has already been built into the system. Fossil fuels have a lifespan of forty years. So there is a reserve margin that is in there.
Dr. Sanjay.
And you want to ensure your reserve, yeah?
Thank you for your view. Time is up and, yes. But really appreciate the very comprehensive views that you've provided on this space. Thank you.